Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Birmingham City Commission on August 25th, 2025, here at the Municipal Building at 151 Martin Street. Would you all join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Ms. Bingham, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Therese Long?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Ballard is absent? Are we expecting him?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Emmerind is absent. Commissioner Hague?
Yeah.
Commissioner Host?
Here.
Commissioner Anthony Long?
Here.
Commissioner Katie Schaefer is absent?
Absent, yes.
Okay.
All right, so we have four commission members this evening, which is a bit light, but is indeed a legal quorum. We will need to appoint a temporary mayor pro tem, and I guess I would nominate Commissioner Anthony Long to do that again if he is so willing.
I'm willing.
Any other nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Proclamations, congratulatory resolutions, awards, appointments, designations, confirmation, administration of oath, introduction of guests, and announcements. We have no announcements this evening, but we have a few appointments. We have three appointments to the Advisory Parking Committee. We have James Asaki, who is a returning applicant, who is a regular retail owner, who would be applying to serve the remainder of a three-year term to expire September 4, 2026. We have returning Michelle Moody, who serves as a regular member resident, who was applying for the three-year term to expire September 4, 2028. And we have reapplying Mr. Kevin Kozlowski, who serves as a regular member resident shopper, who also is reapplying for a term to expire September 4, 2028. So in the order in which we received your nominations, I'll ask you to come up, give your name and address, and talk about why you're interested in serving, and we will begin with Mr. Asaki.
My name is James Asaki. My home address, you want to?
Yes.
4224 Orchard Way in Bloomfield Hills, and I've served on this committee for many years, and I'd like to give back to the community in some capacity, and I think I can do that with this position.
Any questions for Mr. Asaki? Thank you.
No question, no?
Nope, thank you very much. If you'll remain until all the appointments are made?
Sure.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Michelle Moody?
Hi, good evening. My address, 957 Pleasant Street in Birmingham, and it's really been a great pleasure serving on the committee for the last couple of years. Originally, I was most interested in joining in order to help the parking system come up with a plan for public charging for electric vehicles, and that's really still a project that is a work in process because the replies to the RFQ were suppliers that really didn't provide responses that indicated that they'd be qualified to do the work, so the supply base still remains very thin, and it's something that committee is continuing to work on. I'd like to be able to continue on the committee and work on that, as well as contribute input on all of the great design and remodeling projects that will go on for the next several years in the system.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Moody? Thank you. And finally, Mr. Kozlowski.
Kevin Kozlowski, 421 Madison Street. I've been serving on the APC for the last three years. Lots of exciting stuff has been happening in that period. We're doing lots of important repairs, considering a lot of aesthetic upgrades. We've also installed new equipment. We're getting a lot of new data, so we're trying to put together good reports for that. The parking system is just a really integral part of the functioning of this downtown, and I'd be excited to continue working on it.
Thank you. Any questions from Mr. Kozlowski? All right, thank you. Commissioner Hague?
Seeing as all three are returning, do we want to make one motion for all three as they are consistent with the number of openings?
I think we need to do three separate ones because they need to be slotted into the particular positions that I noted, and they have different end dates.
That's right.
So would you like to take a crack at the first one, Commissioner Hague?
Just get to the right page. Yes, sir.
I can do the first one while he's going to?
Yeah, go for it.
I'll appoint, I'd like to appoint Michelle Moody to the Advisory Parking Committee as a regular member, a resident, to serve a three-year term to expire on September 4, 2028.
All right. All in favor of Ms. Moody?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. Next nomination, please.
Then I will propose Mr. Kozlowski to appoint the APC as a regular member resident, shopper, I believe, with the position that you were previously in, to serve the three-year term to expire September 4, 28.
All in favor of Mr. Kozlowski?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations. And finally, Commissioner Host, would you like the third one?
Yes, it's me. I'd like to appoint James Asaki to the Advisory Parking Committee as a regular member who is a retail owner to serve the remainder of a three-year term to expire September 4, 2026.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations to you also. And now, if the three of you would remain, while we consider our next appointment, we have an application for a regular member to the Museum Board to serve the remainder of a three-year term to expire July 5, 2028. And we have Mr. Robert Mall.
My name is Robert Mall, and I reside at 271 Chesterfield Avenue, previously neighbors, apparently on Pleasant Street, but I moved last November. One thing I'll note is I had actually applied for a two-year term, not a three-year term, so when you make your motion, please make a note of that. I've had a long history and long interest in history, also a firm believer in serving the community in which you live, and so this is an opportunity to help out.
Right, then to clarify, Mr. Mall, there are two positions open, one that are vacant, one that, both for regular members who are hopefully members of the Birmingham Historical Society, but that as long as the majority of the members are, you individually don't need to be, but that might be something you'd want to look at. And then one position ends, 7627, and one ends 7628, and it's generally our practice to give appointees the longest slot, just for stability. If you're willing to take the three-year term, we'd be delighted to put you in that one.
Okay.
If you want the two-year term, however, the Board would adhere to your wishes.
I think since this is my first time out of the gate, I'd rather go with the shorter term first.
All right.
And then you might see me again in a few years.
Certainly. And did any commission members have any questions?
Yeah. Why did you move north?
Well, in a strange stroke of luck, we were, we've become empty nesters, and we decided to move into a larger house. I know, it doesn't make sense, but we were in one of these situations, do we move or do we renovate, and we decided to move. And interestingly, just commentary on the market, we looked at other cities, and we chose Birmingham, one, because my wife grew up here on Southfield, and two is we moved from Washington DC, and we wanted a community that was walkable, so moving to Franklin or moving to Bloomfield Hills, no offense, was, we ruled it out in terms of wanting to stay here in Birmingham. I'll go in and answer to your question.
Yeah, thank you.
And if you throw in that you like the parks, it's a trifecta. So, all right.
Brownie points right there.
So, all right, thank you very much. Are there any further questions for Mr. Mall? All right, could we have a nomination? Commissioner Host?
I'd like to appoint Robert Mall as a regular member to the Museum Board to serve the remainder of a?
Two.
A two-year term to expire July 5, 2027.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. So Ms. Bingham will swear the four of you in if you can all gather around the podium here.
Raise your right hand and say, "I do after me. I do sound as a friend that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of this state in endeavors to journey through an honest and efficient administration of the affairs of Birmingham free from partisan distinction of control and to perform the duties of the Office of Advisory Parking Committee or Museum Board according to the best of my ability."
I do.
I hear you guys all assigned a spot, so pick your name and sign above that line. So Michelle, you're right there.
I'm here. Okay.
So we want to congratulate all of you, and thank you for your new and continued service. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we now move to open to the public for matters not on the agenda. If you'd like to make a comment about something that is not on the agenda, you can come to the podium, state your, excuse me?
We just missed one, the introduction of staff.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. My mistake. Introduction of Staff. I skipped. My apologies.
Yes.
We have Ms. Department of Public Services introducing. I'll hand it to you, Scott.
Good evening. I'm happy to introduce to you Kalnese Clerkwood. She is our new recreation coordinator. She comes to us from Detroit, where she was doing a similar role, but it had more of a blend with how we have our Birmingham Shopping District also, in addition to running a bunch of community activities. She's got a Bachelor's in Science in Advertising from Grand Valley, and she has a Master's of the Arts of Organizational Communication from Wayne State University. So we're all excited. She hit the ground running and was putting together the schedule on day two of being here, which kind of was just really kind of cool, because it's usually, people struggle to sort that out. So she's been impressing Connie and the rest of us already with her abilities, and we look forward to helping a long career where we continue to move forward.
Congratulations. Ms. Clerkwood, you are welcome to say a few words if you'd like, or not to, if you'd like.
Well, I do want to say thank you for having me, and I'm honored to be here. I have been welcomed with open arms from my coworkers and the community, and it's just been a breath of fresh air. The community here is beautiful, and I'm just happy, and I look forward to a long career in the Parks and Rec and wherever else you would have me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
Ms. Clerkwood, what are your recreation goals for Birmingham citizens?
That's an awesome question, actually. In my three weeks that I've been here so far, I've had a lot of time to kind of put my finger on things, per se, and I think my goal for recreation here would be to continue to make it a safe space. The parks are beautiful. It is a walking community. I'm from Southfield, but I live in Farmington, so on my ride here, it's just amazing to see all the greenery and the golf parks and the parks and the people walking their dogs and the kids playing at the park area. A lot of childcare centers I see in the area, so that's refreshing, because I've got two kids of my own. But long-term, I'd love to see an inclusive space for Parks and Rec, and most importantly, to keep it safe and sustainable and a walkable city. I would like to continue to see that.
Well, thank you.
Any more questions? I'd love to ask them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And again, welcome.
Thank you.
All right, and now we are open to the public for matters not on the agenda. So again, you are welcome to come to the podium, state your name and address, and make your remarks, and if you are online and you'd like to make a comment on matters not on the agenda, please use the raise your hand function, and we will call on you.
Hi, Kristy Barrett, 915 Harmon Street. I'm here to make a comment on the biggest civic project in the last 30 years, I would say, and that is the 400 East Leagum Project. On August 11th, I made a comment that ended up in the minutes that said, Kristy Barrett supports exploring alternative options for supporting the community senior in NEXT, and that is true. But my main point was this was not a transparent process and bordered on an Open Meetings Act violation in spirit. Within eight weeks, there was private meetings and deliberation, and contracts were signed. The purchase of the building, setting up an Aging in Place Committee, signed an MOU with NEXT, and made a decision to put 1.33 meals on the vote. Posting an agenda four days before public deliberation may be legal, but it's not in the best interest of the community, and it doesn't install trust. There was less than three minutes deliberation on each of these issues, which is less than what I'm allowed to speak. You made a wise purchase. That was a no-brainer. Whether NEXT existed or not, 1.5 acres in the middle of the city adjacent to a public park is a city asset regardless of what you do with it. The dirt is worth more than that. NEXT needed a facility. This entire project was driven by a date. NEXT needed to vacate Birmingham schools. It's not based on validated data. Someone stated there's nothing out there, and that's not true. There is plenty out there, it's just not free. Now the community's going to lose a family, youth, teen, and senior fitness and recreation. NEXT can't afford the operations without more property tax fines. 3.5 million will be wasted, and your own appointed committee members like Dan Share and Bert Kosak agree with that. Eventually, NEXT is going to be without a facility anyway, because you're going to tear it down, and then where are they going to go? The City Commission can only make decisions based on information that you're given, and you're given information to make decisions that I feel other than your body wants. So I don't blame any decision you make, because I don't think you've been provided with good information. I was, for many years, a nurse in an intercity level one trauma center, so that teaches you to quickly look at data, analyze it, and make decisions. And I think that real data is missing. The aging population percentages from actual numbers is very different. Today, 25, the median age in Birmingham is 41, and 25 years from now, in 2050, will be 42. So it's not this huge silver tsunami everyone's talking about. When we talk about membership, NEXT membership is 4% of the population, and of the available cohort, it's 5%. YMCA misrepresented their membership, because he counted, parish counted family memberships as one, whereas you can assume it's three or four. So that's Birmingham-only, YMCA members, 7,000 members. People are just now finding out that the YMCA is going to close, and they're shocked. They didn't know. I voted on the senior millage without knowing the YMCA was closed. I was like, that's, you know, needed. Now, for some data, NEXT space at Midvale has never been validated independently. They use 10,000 square feet today. 36% of that 10,000 square feet is the gym and the kitchen. NEXT program, including their administration's programming space, is 6,700 square feet. When they started complimentary pickleball 27 hours a week, they lost 30% of needed program space. Birmingham Pickleball Club advertises indoor pickleball, $55 a year. Is this a senior service? Current NEXT fitness offering are 43 hours a week. Pickleball is 62% of their fitness. The latest test fit for the 47,000 square feet, NEXT administration and their fitness room is 4,000 square feet. That's just shy of what their entire space is now. If you add their multipurpose rooms, exclusive living room and all that, it's 31,000 square feet. So there's no, understandably, how this became 47,000 square feet. Project to date, you have spent $6.3 million of taxpayer money. This time next year, it'll be 7.5, and nothing has changed. Now that you've decided to take a pause, I ask that you stop and take a real pause and look at the real data, look at what the community is losing, looking what it's costing only Birmingham taxpayers, and listen and find out what they really want. Thanks.
Thank you. I will note as a correction that none of the senior millage money has been spent to date.
It's been collected.
One year has been collected.
Right.
So.
Then I will have to up the 7.5 to 8.6, right? By the end of the millage.
Thank you. Any other public comment for items not on the agenda? Any comment online? Please use the raise your hand function. We have Mr. Ben Hubert.
Hello, everyone. Ben Hubert, I'm a Courtland Lake resident. Since our move to the neighborhood about six years ago, Courtland Lake has undergone a significant turnover of residents and new development, and the majority of our neighbors now express strong desire for reconstruction of these roads, including proper drainage, curbs, and gutters. And while there's tax implications that may be a concern to some people, they can be addressed and managed effectively, how can we prioritize the reconstruction of these roads as an agenda item?
Is that your entire comment, Mr. Hubert?
That's my entire comment. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other public comment for items not on the agenda? All right, we will move to the consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion and approved by a roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of the items unless a commissioner or citizen starts requests, in which event the item will be removed from the General Order of Business and considered under the last item of new business. Do any commissioners wish to withdraw any items? Could we have a motion then, please?
I'd like to make a motion approving the consent agenda, including items A through H.
Second.
All right. Is there any comment on the motion from the commission? Any comment on the motion from the public, including online using the raise your hand function? Seeing none, it's Bingham will roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Host?
Yes.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Hague?
Yes.
All right, thank you. We now move to the City Manager's Report.
Yes, good evening. I will try to go through this as well as I can and hopefully not take too much time. From the Baldwin Public Library, just an update that the library will be closed from Saturday, August 30th through Monday, September 1st. However, after that, there's a lot of good programming planned for the month of September. Their fall storytimes begin on Tuesday, September 2nd, and they have nine different storytimes a week for young children and their caregivers. These are given, it's a ticketing system, and it's first come, first serves for anybody that's interested in attending, and they have those every, well, every day of the week except for Friday, Monday to Friday. Also, there's a new program coming, Classic Michigan Food and Drinks, The Story Behind the Brands, on Monday, September 8th, all about some of the local Detroit and Michigan brands that we all know and love. Also, they have an upcoming concert in the atrium on Tuesday, September 9th, from 3 to 4. They have George Shirley, a tenor, who will be presenting as a performer. He sings. From the Birmingham Museum, we have a popular monthly lecture series returning to the Baldwin Library, and that starts on Thursday, September 11th. There'll be a program on Birmingham's Cream Magazine, which, as you all know, there's an exhibit at the museum for Cream Magazine, and they will be doing a talk on that. Those are always well-attended. Also in September, the Friends of the Birmingham Museum will host their fall tour of Greenwood Cemetery on Saturday, September 20th. That tour is $10 a person, and it begins rain or shine at the cemetery, the east gate at 1:00 PM. Updates from the Birmingham Shopping District. Well, as you all know, we just recently had Dream Cruise. The Birmingham Cruise Event was held. We've had ongoing movie nights and the farmer's market. In September, we'll host the final movie night of the series. The farmer's market will continue every Sunday. The BSD will also be hosting the Art Walk in collaboration with the Birmingham Bloomfield Arts Center and the City of Birmingham Public Arts Board. There are many other events planned. If anybody wants to go to their events calendar on their website, there are other events as well. Also from the BSD, they mentioned that over the last several months, Birmingham has welcomed over 20 new businesses to the downtown area. So we do have a new business guide. I believe it was presented to you, I think it was at Long Range Planning in a previous year. So that's been working out very well, and Erica Bassett, our executive director, has been getting out and meeting with all of the new storefront owners, the retail owners that are coming. Also, the BSD has currently launched a downtown usage survey, and they've received several, well, 200 or so responses so far, and that'll continue through the end of 2025. They had a soft launch. Just for interest sake, some of the demographics for people that were filling out the survey, 35% of the respondents directly lived in Birmingham in the 48009 area code. Interestingly, 80% of the respondents were female. They talked about behaviors, the most popular days for people to visit were Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Most popular activities, dining, shopping, and the farmer's market. Couple of comments, that they thought that the restaurants are open at hours that are convenient and the assortment is good, however, they would look for a little more affordable, casual, healthy lunch and dinner options. Also, the? Also, that the retailers are primarily open during the time they wish to shop. That's been an age-old debate in downtowns for decades. Some people still asked for later retail hours and more affordable options, but for the most part, everybody was happy. So that survey, that's just preliminary results so far, but that, we'll continue collecting those through the end of the year. From the Building Department, they had a Board of Zoning Appeals meeting in July, and they had three variances that were approved. Also, there's a monthly report that you can find in the manager's report for the Building Department if you want to keep track of how many permit applications, inspections, and so on have been made. And then a little note, you may have noticed in the halls, the partial walls are up where the new doors are going in. So we now have the new interior walls, and we have the, some of the electrical is in for the card readers that are going to be put in place for the security system. The doors, however, while they're, they've been ordered, they're custom-made to fit and match all of the woodwork that we have here. They're just now framing them out off-site, and then they'll be bringing in. So we expect that to be finished mid to late September. Also, we've done all the custom molding work, and it's all being stained to match the existing that's there. So you'll be able to see that here in the next month. And after-hours, of course, the same access will continue to occur for members of the public that are trying to enter the building for after-hours meetings. They'll come in through the police door on the east side of the building. From the city clerk's office, they just wanted to let everyone know that voters should have received their new updated voter ID card, which confirms their new precinct and polling locations. As you know, that's changed most recently. Also, for the November 4th election, they have published their early voting dates. They start on October 25th and run through November 2nd for anybody that's interested in voting early. Absentee ballots will be available September 25th and will be sent out to everybody who has requested one. And then those will be sent out until Halloween, 5 o'clock on Halloween, October 31st, which is the last date that the clerk's office can send out absentee ballots by mail. From the city manager's office, I have one, another setting the record straight. If you recall, on August 11th, at the city commission meeting, there was a resident that made some public comments pertaining to the financial relationship between the city and the library. The suggestion was made that the city had, the finance department and the city had improperly withheld funds from the library. So I don't know if, how many of you have read this, I'll try to go through it. It's a little bit of a, it's a complicated thing to say. First of all, that is inaccurate. The city has not taken nor withheld any money from the library that was not approved by the library. We haven't taken or held any money with regards to the administrative services. So the background of this is, in December of last year, it was determined, it was, it had come to our attention that basically the library had an agreement with the city that was started in 2009 for the city to provide many different services to them, such as human resources, payroll, accounts payable, banking and investment services, retirement and pension administration, insurance administration, et cetera. And there was a contract that was signed in 2009 that expired in 2013. It was based on prices from that era, and unbeknownst to, I guess, the current, previous administrations, that had never been updated. So the library was paying for those services to be provided them at those rates that were in place at that time in 2009 to 2013. So of course, the rates have gone up significantly in terms of what it costs to provide those services since, but the library was not paying for the full cost of those services. So we did approach them in December of '24. The finance director and assistant city manager, Mark Clements, talked to Rebecca Kraft, the director of the library, and said, here, okay, we found out that you have, we understand nobody approached them, so there wasn't, it's not that they were hiding that on purpose, I guess, but nobody had approached them with a new contract. We brought a new contract with them, we ran the numbers at the current cost that the city is, of all the services the city is providing, and we brought that to them. Then, so the change was essentially, they were paying $104,889 a year for all of these services, and the actual cost that we were, for what we were providing them was $219,067. So once we realized that, we presented it to them in December, and then again in February of 2025, where we took the detailed contract to them. And although that new contract has not been signed by the library, the library, of course, has been receiving substantial services and not paying the true cost that the taxpayers are paying to provide those services to the library. And that being said, Director Kraft did include that increased cost of $219,000 approximately for those administrative services in the library budget that she prepared and presented to the library board. The library board approved that budget unanimously on March 17th. Again, that, that amount, that increased amount was also included in the budget that was presented to the city commission, then back on the budget hearing, the, the meeting that we had on the Saturday, and then the hearing when it was actually approved on May 19th. So the suggestion from the resident that A, we're withholding money, we were not, and B, that it was something out of line with what was approved by the library board, is not true. What has happened is, and I'll explain this, every year, based on the approved budget, the finance department, from an accounting perspective, has to create journal entries for each of the different elements, expenses, and revenues that come in based on the approved budget. So what they did was, they put in journal entries that mirror the approved budget, which was based on the increased amount, cost of the administrative services. Now, we're, I'm not going to explain this as well as our finance director, of course, but that being said, we have general accounting principles that we're required to follow as a municipality, and it's based on the approved budget document. And again, the budget that was submitted for the library was approved by the library board and ultimately by the city commission. So all that was done was these journal entries that were made, but we did not take any money. But there's a journal entry that notes how much it would be on, say, a monthly basis, and what happens is, at the end of the year, we true-up that amount. So for instance, if the library, as you know, we're in negotiations with the library currently, we've determined that they are an independent library, and now what we're negotiating with them is, what relationship would they like to see with the city? Would they like to continue to have this collaboration where we provide all of those services to them? Or would they like to go outside? Would they like to hire their own and extricate themselves from all of the services that the city administration provides to them? So we're still waiting on them to give us back draft contracts for what they would like. In the meantime, of course, we did not simply cut off those services because, of course, the library relies on all those services, as do the library employees over there. So we continue to provide them, and those journal entries were made to reflect the budget. We did not take any money. Should the library decide that they want to continue on with our services, then they will sign the contract, and at the end of the year, everything will be taken out in accordance with the contract, the end of the fiscal year. Should they decide that they would like to move on and hire an independent third party to provide those services or multiple third parties, then we will look at, we'll prorate it from the day that they notify us that they wish to stop using our services, and we'll change the amount accordingly. But at this time, we have not taken any money from the library for this. So I just want to be clear that the statement that was made is not accurate. So I just wanted to clear the record for that. And again, we've continued to provide these services until they decide what they want to do moving forward. We weren't going to cut off their services until they decide what they were going to do. Obviously, we didn't want to put anybody in that situation. So that's the update on that. From the communications department, there's a lot of different communication pieces that they're working on right now. The fall and winter edition of the Birmingham Beat, Round Town E-Newsletter. They just completed the employee newsletter. Numerous e-blasts for different construction projects that are going on. And as always, if anyone's interested in signing up to receive our newsletters and alerts, they can go on bhamegov.org/e-news and sign up for those. From the Department of Public Services, as you've heard at a previous meeting, we're currently looking at the Poppleton Park Playground improvements, and there was a great turnout for a public input session that was held on August the 5th. Also, there's a survey that Parks and Rec is doing. It's posted on Engage Birmingham, or it was, it actually closed on Friday. It ran August 5th to August 22nd, and it generated quite a lot of participation as well, so you'll be hearing from that in the near future. The topics most discussed were that people were looking for the addition of more swings. They were half, people were happy with the accessibility improvements that were being made to different parks, and they wanted those to continue. They would like to see increasing the number of places to sit, benches, et cetera, in parks, and particularly more shade in the park areas. So the draft concept plan for Poppleton Park will be reviewed by the Multimodal Transportation Board at their first meeting in September, and then it'll be going to the Parks and Rec Board on September 9th. Also from Parks and Rec, the DPS had a great turnout on August 6th for the Booth Park Natural Area Perennial Planting Event. And so 20 people showed up, and they planted some new plants that are native to Michigan, and that was done through a grant that was received from the Community Habitat Improvement Project through Oakland County. And we have applied for another one for next year, so we can continue this work in taking out invasive species and replanning with native species. From the Engineering Department, I won't go through all of the lists, but as you can probably see around town, there are a lot of construction projects going on right now. Many of them are just finishing up. There's several of them that'll be completed by September, a couple of others where we're just addressing punch list items are basically finished, but there's a couple of issues left. Big updates, North Adams, that will, is set to be, to reopen for the start of school by the end of August. So that's, that's good to know. Wimbledon Phase 1 is tentatively projected to start at the beginning of September. Corton Lake Cleanout has been completed, and many of the other different programs have started up, the 2025 Trip Hazard Elimination Program, the 2025 Concrete and Sidewalk Repair Program, and so on. So we have a lot of construction occurring around town. Also, for the public to be notified, that Consumers Energy is starting a gas pipeline pressure testing project this week at the intersection of Coolidge and West Maple. What they're doing is testing the gas mains for leaks and to assess their safety and integrity, which is a good thing, of course, but it is going to require a restriction on the number of lanes on Coolidge. So although I haven't gotten any calls yet, I presume that those will be coming through. But that is something that is a Consumers Energy project that we have no control of. They will, they are requiring one lane of northbound Coolidge and two lanes of southbound Coolidge to be closed between Maple Road and Yorkshire, Yorkshire. So if there's any questions that the public has, or you hear anything from your constituents they need to call Consumers, they have all the detail on that. From the Fire Department, they provided an update on the Cruise Event, and a lot of the work that they did, they had 15 firefighter paramedics out for Dream Cruise. They also added an ambulance and a roving bike crew in addition to what they normally provide. They responded to 11 different calls for service throughout the day, and we did have additional help from the Michigan State Police. One thing of note, they did shut down a food truck that was operating without a license from the Health Department. They had a barbecue issue and some other heat exhaustion, this kind of thing, going on. And then when we get to police, you'll hear a little update from the police department as well. From Human Resources, as you just were introduced to Clintice Kirkwood, she's a full-time hire in DPS. We have also hired a Parks operator in, oh, actually, it's not a hire, it's a promotion, sorry, Rebecca Laudman, Parks Operator in DPS. We also have many different hiring anniversaries this August. Obviously, I don't usually read them. All but I usually hit the ones that were 20 years and up. We have a lot this month. Anthony Lowe from the library, 20 years. Gina Moody from police, 22 years. Myself with the manager's office, 23 years. Veronica Williams from Treasury, 23 years. Carrie Laird, Parks and Rec, 24 years. Fire Chief Paul Wells, 27 years. Devon DeRoke from DPS, 27 years. And the winner, Audrey Reed from police, 32 years. She's a crossing guard. That's been working with us for that long. So congratulations to all of those people that continue to serve the city of Birmingham on a daily basis. Updates from the Planning Department, the zoning ordinance update project that you approved in the budget is moving forward. They have a request for proposal, and they'll be going out, I believe it's next week. They'll be posting that and seeing who is going to submit for that zoning ordinance update. They will be developing a communications plan with our communication department as that project progresses, because as you know, like the master plan, there'll be a lot of input along the way as we move forward with that. They're hoping to receive proposals within about a month after they post it on Mitten, and then they'll be reviewing them, and ultimately, a proposal will come to you for a firm to update the zoning ordinance. The Historic District Commission is continuing to work on the Historic Preservation Master Plan with a first draft to be completed in October of this year, so you'll see that shortly. The Environmental Sustainability Committee, they just met tonight, just before this meeting at 5:30, and they're finalizing the Community Engagement Plan, drafting code language related to leaf blowers, and reviewing plans to institute a congestion fee to support the city's sustainability goals. The Multimodal Transportation Board, as I think you directed, they were to have two public input meetings with the residents of Shirley and Arlington, and they did that with regards to traffic calming. They did one on July 28th and one on August 7th. From the Police Department, an update, as you know, they have been targeting and, and pushing for changes to state law with our legislators in addressing the vehicle noise issue, primarily on Woodward Avenue, but obviously on any state roads. And they did receive a communication that due to disputes over the state budget and the desire to avert a government shutdown, that's kind of on hold right now, but it continues to have great support and hopefully will move forward once they get their budget locked up. From the Dream Cruise recap from the Police Department, again, they mentioned that they responded to 198 calls for service between Friday and Saturday. Basically, there's a lot of different things that come up. There was nothing significant, although there's, the more significant incidents are listed in the report, and that was an operating well intoxicated accident, stolen vehicle, arrest for retail fraud, injured person, domestic violence arrest, natural death investigation. We did not have any crowd control issues or anything like that. All went very smoothly. We did have two locations where marijuana distributors had temporary permits for the Dream Cruise. They weren't allowed to hand out the marijuana. They were caught doing so, told to stop. One of them got caught again and was shut down, just so you know. The other one continued to follow all of the rules as soon as they were told what they were. Parking Systems update, the Chester Parking Garage construction, as you know, repairs are progressing on schedule there. The painting is almost done for the interior white coating, and they're going to start with the painting mockups of the approved accent green that you just recently looked at, and that should be done by the end of October. And as you know, the parks, or the parking staff will also be collaborating with the Public Arts Board to incorporate murals at several locations, as you talked about, in August, earlier this month. That's about it from the manager's report. I do want to report that the September workshop, we have confirmed that Oakland County Water and Sewer System Update will be presented by Water Resources Commissioner Jim Nash and his staff. So that's what's on for September 8th, the workshop, and then we'll have the regular meeting following after that.
Hi. Thank you very much. Comprehensive and informative as always. All right, we now move to new business. We have a public hearing for the special land use permit and final site plan and design review for 298 South Old Woodward to permit the modification of existing required off-street loading facility. And so I'm going to open the public hearing at 8:16 p.m. and turn it over to Mr. Dupuy.
Thank you, Mayor Long, Nick Dupuy, Planning Director. On all those, this is a public hearing, our request today is to adjourn. The reason being, the same as the last time, we're requesting postponement to a date certain today. Just seems like they're taking a good, sweet time reviewing the contract and have yet to provide me with anything, in keeping with, I think, what's considered best practices. We'd like to bring the full package to you when it's ready. Therefore, we're requesting adjournment, AKA no date certain. And if you would be so willing, we also suggest that whatever fees or whatever costs there would be to re-notice the eventual public hearing be borne by that applicant. And we're suggesting you build that into your motion language, should you wish to do so.
Right, because we've already noticed for this twice, correct?
Just once. The postpone to a date certain didn't require additional notice.
Okay. Thank you.
This one would.
All right.
And that's in the contract, right? That they pay for the renoticing?
Not necessarily.
Okay, so, are there any questions or comments from the public for Mr. Dupuy about this item? Either in the room or online using the Raise Your Hand function? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing at 8:18 PM, and now we can have questions of Mr. Dupuy by the Commission. Commissioner Hague.
One for personal clarification, so that when it comes back, I at least know where to look.
Okay.
I read through the documentation, and there was a mention of a parking space, either a movement or a reconfiguration of a parking space. Looking at the schematics, it didn't jump out at me where it was. Am I misreading something, or am I missing something on the schematics? Because just when it comes back, I want to be able to go, oh, yeah, I remember that.
A question for your question. May I ask, I wrote in many places, a reconfiguration of a loading space.
Maybe that's what it was. I thought it was maybe a parking space. I'm going from, I didn't scribble on the notes, I remember reading it.
So, to be clear, there is no reconfiguring of parking spaces, just a loading space.
That's fine. I got interrupted halfway through, so probably I thought parking, read loading.
Cool.
Blame my kids.
Any other questions from the Commission for Mr. Dupuy?
If not, I'll make a motion.
I would be delighted if you would like to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution to adjourn the Special Land Use Permit Amendment and Final Site Plan and Design Review Application for 298 South Old Woodward to permit the modification of existing required off-street loading facility to make room for a new in-house laundry facility and new trash compactor, in addition to require the applicant to cover the cost of the additional noticing that will be required to reset the public hearing.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Are there any comments from the public on this motion, either in the room or online using the Raise Your Hand function? I see none. Any comments from the Commission on the motion? All right, Ms. Bingel, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hoss.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes.
Commissioner Hague.
Yes.
Commissioner Long.
Yes, sorry.
We have to go back to initials, don't we?
I know. It's the first time I've ever done it, though, so.
That was a very speedy public hearing, which takes us to New Business Item B, Resolution to Adjust the Position Pay Ranges and Individual Ranges of Non-Organized Administrative Management and Permanent Staff.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Council. I am Christina Salufow. I am the HR Manager, and I come to you today on behalf of the 15 department heads, 37 full-time employees, and 33 permanent part-time employees who are not covered under a collective bargaining agreement. Each year, HR, the City Manager, comes to the City Commission to consider a market adjustment to keep wages competitive in the local market, along with performance-based merit adjustments that allow employees to advance within their positions' pay ranges. So, the market increase, what we're speaking of, is really a cost of living adjustment. And to do that, we're looking at the Consumer Price Index. And so, if we look back a year from this past April, the inflation rose 1.4%. We are recommending 3% in effort, 3% increase in wages and to increase our pay ranges to keep pace with the economic climate and to, you know, make sure that we're not falling into a lagging category. The second part of this is also the merit increases, which is done through the performance evaluations that we do annually. Through these performance evaluations, we have scores, numerical scores, which correspond to a percentage, which allows the employee to move within their designated wage bracket, depending on what their position is. So, the Finance Department has reviewed this, and they are estimating that this will be a budgeted amount, and for 85 non-organized personnel, it'll be $325,000, and that includes the wages and the fringe benefits. And so, I am happy to answer any questions that you may have about this process.
And that is the wages and fringe benefits for both the cost of living adjustment and the merit increases?
Correct.
And your report also noted that this 3% recommendation is similar to the other employee groups in the city who have received raises this year under the organized labor, which was 3.5% for ASME, 3.5% for BFFA, and 3.5% for the Teamsters.
Correct.
So, trying to maintain equity among all employee classes. Are there any questions from the Commission for Christina? Well, that was a thorough presentation, if there's no questions. Could I invite a Commissioner then to make a motion?
I'll make the motion. I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution to adjust the position pay ranges and individual wages of non-organized administrative management and permanent part-time employees by 3% effective July 1st, 2025, and to authorize the City Manager and Human Resources to apply merit adjustments for non-organized administrative management and permanent part-time employees based upon outcomes of performance evaluations. Further, to authorize the budget amendments from Wage Adjustment Account 101-0, sorry, .0-272.000-709.000 to the appropriate departments.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any Commission comments on the motion? Any public comments on the motion? Either in the room or online using the Raise Your Hand function? I see none, so Ms. Bingel, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Anthony Long.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoss.
Yes.
Mayor Teresa Long.
Yes.
Commissioner Hague.
Yes.
Thank you, Christina.
Thank you.
All right, New Business Item C is an item that has moved through the Commission process to become a full agenda item for discussion about how to implement a community survey, and we have Ms. Fairburn with our options.
Good evening, City Commission. I think it's the earliest I've spoken to you all in a very long time, so I'm excited for that. So, yes, we are at step three of an item brought up by Commissioner Hague for discussion at a future meeting. At the last, the last time this was discussed, at step two, it was June 9th, and at that time, the Commission voted to move forward with a survey of the community to gauge community sentiment and priorities, as far as what projects get prioritized, where the city, where the City Commission puts the money, where we budget it, and what we endeavor to do. Throughout step one and step two of this process, there's been discussion of whether we go to an outside research firm. The city of Troy, our neighbors, had a really comprehensive community survey completed by a research firm. Anyway, but also with the idea that we might want to bring it in-house. We have demonstrated the ability to put out a survey to our entire community with the Aging in Place Survey. And what I have come to you tonight is with, I guess, the question, do we want to do it in-house? We can do it where we put a survey in every single water bill that goes out. That is how Aging in Place was conducted. It takes three months to get a survey to every household that way, because 1/3 of the city receives its water bill each month, and it would take a substantial amount of hours tallying and analyzing that survey data, but it would give everybody an equal chance and opportunity to answer it. We could also, of course, use Engage Birmingham. The other option is to go with a firm who has a lot of experience in this area, and I spoke to two such firms. One was Cobalt Community Research. They did Troy's survey. And the other is Polco, another well-known national firm that does this kind of analysis. And between those quotes, we're looking in the $20,000 to $30,000 range, so it'd be below an RFP limit. We might want to contact one more firm to get like the three quotes before moving forward. The interesting thing about going with an outside firm is they would take a statistically sound sample of our residents, around 2,000 to 3,000 randomly sampled homes. And what they would also offer us is questions that can be benchmarked against other data from other Michigan residents and then national data. That's something we would not have the ability to do in-house, but it really is a matter of the Commission's pleasure, how we proceed.
Thank you. Commissioner Hague, I'll give the first remarks to you, since this was your topic.
Thank you. So, appreciate you going out and getting the information. I am definitely on the hire a professional firm footing for this, for a whole number of reasons, but we need to set guardrails on what we actually ask, because if we send out something that just says, what do you want? Well, you know, we're going to have, I want a petting zoo in my backyard and a butterfly house on top of City Hall, and pick something random. There's going to be wish lists that are greater than 10 years' worth of annual budgets that will come back. And so, what I would like to do is exactly the points that you brought up, which are really, really salient for this, the types of information that external companies have access to, that they have the experience with. But it would be in our best interest to actually have coordination with our Finance and Treasury Department, so that we can really give a lot more transparency about, these are basic needs of the city. So, let's say, of the 34 cents that we actually take out of every dollar that the city gets, very much similar to what we've put together in many, many previous, but in finer granularity. Here's the 34 cents, and I've talked about this before. This goes towards roads, this goes towards infrastructure, this goes towards public safety, this goes towards parks, this goes, et cetera. So, it can be really clear, oh, this is what's left, but are you prepared to pay more for this specific range of options within constraints that the experts would provide to us? So, we can then say, okay, if the community comes back and says, you know what, and I'll pick one, we think roads need to be the first priority, or we think we need more parks, or the golf course needs to be replaced, or whatever it could be, then we can say, all right, here's the budget that we have, we can work out how much extra money that will be. Are you prepared for that much extra taxation to happen to achieve your wish list? So, I really, really think you kind of made the case all by itself for, there are skills that we don't have, because why would we have them? It's not a negative, it's not, well, why would we do this? Why would we have this? And bring in what we can get from our Treasury and Finance people. I think that's, you made the case. It was very, very succinct and to the point. Thank you.
Mr. Hague, I want to know what you have against butterfly farms.
Absolutely nothing. Go down to the Detroit Zoo.
I'm kidding. No, I agree with you. This is a very important point. One of the reasons why I supported the YMCA putting it on the ballot was not whether it would pass or not, it would give us feedback on what our community wants and what they're willing to pay for. If it failed miserably, then it's like, okay, move on to the next topic. If it was very close vote, then maybe it needs fine tuning. That's why I voted in favor of that. That being said, I think that we need to have, this is very important, I agree with it. I don't like spending money willy-nilly, so part of me at first was like, no, let's let the city handle it. But at the same time, I think that we need the distance and the expertise. I think it's well worth the money to do it. I think it'll give us the feedback that we need and want. After all, we are here to provide for what our city residents want and need, and we need to hear from them, so I think it's money well spent.
Commissioner Hoss.
I agree with both Commissioners, but I want to emphasize, not what you want, what you need, or what are your priorities. That's how we've been getting into trouble. What do you wish for is a horrible thing to say. We ought to stick to real money.
Hence, the guardrail observation, but you actually stated it better.
Well, I don't think that there's anything wrong with the community being aspirational, but if the point of this question is to determine priorities, I think it would be useful if perhaps part of the engagement involves perhaps some interaction with the Commission, so we can put some scope on this. I've reviewed many of these for various topics over the years, and we certainly don't need boilerplate questions about, you know, do you think we should try to improve our manufacturing base? There are things that we don't do in this community that makes us different than many other places, even places like Troy. And so, the questions need to be carefully curated to be relevant for our community, and as Commissioner Hague and Hoss and Long have pointed out, what we're trying to get to. It's not a general community satisfaction survey, it's about for the amount of money that we have in a year, and I think your point about some instruction about of that 34 cents, half of it goes to infrastructure already. What are your priorities as we look at improvements over the next several years? So, I also agree, an external form would be wonderful.
Okay, and I will say that both firms I talked to allow for their benchmarked questions and also their expertise at crafting questions that are unique to us and get at the issues that you as a Commission want to get at. So, and it would be a process getting to the final form of that survey.
Okay, so you have the direction you need from us?
We need a motion.
Yeah, why don't you make it?
I'll make the motion to adopt a resolution to direct the City Manager to pursue the selection of a professional research firm to conduct a community survey.
I'll second.
All right, any comments on the motion from the Commission? Any comments on the motion from the public? Seeing none? And any comments online from the public using the Raise Your Hand function? I see none. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we now go to New Business Item D.
Madam Mayor, shouldn't have that been a roll call vote?
We're not spending any money yet.
Okay.
It will be a roll call vote when we have a contract to approve, Commissioner Hoss. All right, New Business D, excuse me, yes, New Business D, Resolution to Meet in Closed Session. Ms. Kucherik.
Yes, there was a request to meet in closed session to discuss a written attorney-client privilege communication. However, that would take a super majority of the public body elected, five of seven elected. There are not five people here, so therefore, we cannot go into closed session. There was a potential action under G. I will speak to that when we get to G, if allowed. Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you, Ms. Kucherik. We now move then to New Business E, Commission Items for Future Discussion. A motion is required to bring up the future discussion item at a next reasonable agenda. No discussion of the topic will happen tonight. Do we have any new topics? All right, Commission, discussion on items from a prior meeting?
Madam Mayor, I do have on prior meeting, please.
Okay, well, none of them are formally on the agenda from the City Manager this evening. Do you have just a status question?
Yeah, I have a few comments, but I want to share with you, as I was coming here, I put my glasses down, and I don't know where they are, and I didn't have my wife to find them for me. I looked everywhere. Anyway, Madam Mayor, I'd like to ask and why the issues of roads and infrastructure, as well as the future of next, the Y in 400 East Lincoln, are not on our agenda tonight. Those are our residents' highest priorities. Have these issues been tabled? Are we waiting for workshops to be scheduled to discuss solutions? When we last paused discussion of the next YMCA building, we were in the dark for three straight months, and then we were asked to revisit the issue and vote on a bond proposal in one evening, less than 24 hours before the filing deadline, to put that bond on the November ballot. I, and I believe our constituents... I, and I believe our constituents, don't want that to happen again. There are deadlines to meet and decisions to be made by Next, the YMCA, as well as the city. Why is there no sense of urgency on these issues? And we've been waiting for months for the roads and infrastructure to be scheduled as a workshop. I get calls from homeowners every day asking, when are we going to deal with these pressing Madam Mayor, we don't have to wait for workshops to have intelligent, meaningful discussions on these issues. How can we get them placed on our next meeting's agenda?
Well, Commissioner Host, first of all, these comments were probably more appropriate under Commissioner's comments since they were not an agenda item from a prior meeting. But I will note that the workshop in September is on the water and sewer infrastructure, and I believe the city manager is working on the workshop, which we have already agreed to for roads, potentially for the October meeting.
Correct.
So, and as far as 400 East Lincoln and Next, I disagree with your contention that the fact that it's not on the agenda tonight does not mean there is a sense of urgency. I believe that means that the city manager is working to take steps that they will bring and information that they will bring back to us. So.
Well, that's real comprehensive. The only question I have on what you said is the workshop in September is on infrastructure? You're, you mean?
Yes.
You mean Jim Nash's discussion with us, which?
Is on sewer and water infrastructure.
Absolutely.
Well, I hope that's how it works out, but, you know, Jim handles all of Oakland County, and I hope you're right that he'll be that specific.
We have been led to believe that he is going to speak to our sewer and water infrastructure. All right. So any other, we have no other commission items from a prior meeting, so I will return the discussion to Ms. Kucherik for new business G, potential action.
Yes, thank you. I prepared some notes to discuss this. I was directed by the city manager's office to take the opportunity to watch the multimodal board meeting of August 7, 2025 in its entirety. Members of the board made it very clear that there's a lot of confusion and lack of clarity as to their roles, scope of authority, and duties. In fact, members of the board made it clear that they will quote, "Not make decisions regarding agenda items presented to them by staff until they have had a discussion and debate among themselves as to the scope of their authority, purpose, and duties pursuant to ordinance sections 11031 and 11032," which really is not quite appropriate. And they actually voted unanimously to schedule a special meeting of themselves in order to discuss and debate what their scope of authority and purpose and duties are. In fact, three of them stated that they cannot move forward with any discussions about agenda items until they have determined in their own interpretation what the city ordinance means regarding their scope of authority, powers, purposes, and duties. And this really should be coming from the city commission, not from the board members themselves. So as a result, with much discussion from the manager, the recommendation is that the city commission consider putting a moratorium on any further meetings, opinions, and discussion of the multimodal board until the city commission has had the opportunity to scrutinize and determine if the two sections of the current code is appropriate and is in line with what the city commission desires of the multimodal board and what the city commission would like the scope, authority, purpose, and duties of this board to be. I think they're really struggling, and I think the biggest problem with that is it is lacking clarity for the residents, and they come to be heard, but there's so much discussion about what the board should be doing that the residents are not having a meaningful meeting. I don't believe that the board can continue to function as it is until the city commission has made its determination regarding the ordinance and the direction of the multimodal board with finality so that meetings are productive and in the best interests of the residents. Bottom line is, they need clarity. The multimodal board needs direction, the city commission needs to review and scrutinize the two ordinances. I do have the ordinances and the sections that are appropriate with me tonight that I'll make sure you go home with so you have an opportunity to start reading and thinking about it. So therefore, I am suggesting and believing that the appropriate thing to do is to make a motion to place a moratorium on all future multimodal board meetings in order for the city commission to review and scrutinize Birmingham City Code sections 110-30 and 11031 in order to examine and clarify the scope of authority, purpose, and duties of the multimodal board and to place this topic on a future agenda as determined by the city manager.
Commissioner Long.
So, first of all, I want to make very clear that we appreciate residents of the city of Birmingham volunteering on our various boards. And myself, Commissioner Haig, Commissioner Schaefer, all served on the multimodal board. And we all served with the understanding that it was an advisory board and that we send questions to them, and the word advisory, the definition is having or consisting in the power to make recommendations, but not to take action enforcing them. That is within the purview of the city commission. I understand their concern. I watched the meeting, having served on the board before I became a commissioner, that Arlington and Shirley and Wimbledon presented some challenges and that the city commission wrestled with those challenges and came to a decision on each. Not every square peg fits in a round hole with regard to the city of Birmingham and certain roads and improving them. Arlington and Shirley was, as I said when I voted for it, was a different residential area than a lot of the other places in Birmingham. Wimbledon is similar in that, in that function. It also is a roadway that is different. It's a major roadway versus some of the other roadways we have. But because of those two, I think that the multimodal board made recommendations that we didn't necessarily follow as a commission, and it was back-to-back. I will also say that if you look back over the last, since January 1, even, we have paused and said, we think that certain items should go to the multimodal board first to be reviewed and for them to give recommendations, and we value those recommendations. But not always will we follow them because there are considerations that we take into, that we take into consideration, and because it's back-to-back, I think that they're frustrated, and I get it. But we do value their opinion, we do send stuff to their, to them to report back to us, and by and large, we follow a lot of what they recommend. And I think a lot of this is because we are wrestling with the fact that we took away what historically was residents getting together and doing a petition to improve their roadway, and we took that, we didn't take it away, it's one avenue that's still available, but we said, we're not redoing the roads that need it the most, the ones that have 100-plus-year-old water and sewer, and we can't put that in the resident's hand, it's not fair to them, and we need to make sure that we're plugging the biggest holes water and sewer-wise, and so we developed this other method. And Arlington and Shirley and Wimbledon were some of the first casualties and probably some of the most challenging casualties of that process. And so there's a little bit of that, I think that is also in play with regard to this. So I get their frustration, I want to let them know, having served on the board myself, that it's, that it is an advisory board, it is not a board that makes decisions or should be making decisions, that is for the commission to make, but that does not mean that we don't listen to them, that we don't take their recommendations, and by and large, we normally follow them, but Arlington and Shirley, back-to-back, were ones that we didn't for varying reasons. That is one of the reasons why Commissioner Host wants to have, you know, a workshop. I think all of us do, I think we need to do that, and I think that will help. I don't know if a workshop or maybe a joint meeting with the multimodal board coming up with the commission might be something that might be helpful to help them feel that they're included, that they're, that we, that we hear them, but they also have to understand when you're serving in an advisory role, it is just that, it is advisory, and that while we value their opinion, sometimes we might not always take it, and they can't, they can't fault us for that, and they can't feel like they're not being heard because of that. Unfortunately, there was two back-to-back decisions that maybe didn't follow exactly what they recommended, and so they're kind of feeling like they're not really being listened to. So with that, given what they have articulated, that they're not going to make any more decisions, that's unfortunate because that kind of stops the printing press on their side, and it's hard to make a paper when you don't have the printing press running. So I think that a moratorium is probably in place, but I would think that we should act quickly to set some type of resolution, whether that's a joint meeting, if it needs to be on a Saturday, so be it. And I think we should move forward swiftly and bring everybody under one roof and in one meeting so we can discuss that and let them know what their role, role is, what we, what we expect from them and what we value from them, because they do bring a lot of value.
Well, I think that the commission might want to review the ordinance first ourselves. It's from 2013? Yes, Ms. Ecker.
I just wanted to add one more comment to what Ms. Kucherik said, that to your point, they have been struggling for a while. We saw that in earlier meetings over the last six months or so in particular, and Ms. Kucherik and myself both attended a multimodal board meeting to try to answer some of their questions and provide them with the guidance that they were looking for, which I think, Commissioner Host, you mentioned that at one of the city commission meetings, so we did, we did try, and they're not, they don't agree with what we have indicated the ordinances provide for the scope of their authority.
Okay.
And they did talk about, the conversation at the last meeting, I think, was confusing to the community. Someone asked whether they were there for a public hearing or a discussion on parliamentary procedure, and they talked about voting to disband themselves, which again is, is not their responsibility to say whether they exist or don't exist. So I think that it is something that needs to come to the commission so that we can decide amongst ourselves what it is we want and then communicate that clearly. So, Commissioner Host.
I saw the meeting, and I'm so pleased the city attorney has said what is the problem. And Commissioner Long, you added to it, and I appreciate that because they are floundering. And we have a lot of boards, and this one, like all the others, is very important, and we should meet with them instead of them having their own workshop, and I think it was tentatively set up for September 4. Well, I think what Commissioner Long said is correct. We should meet with them and talk and try to get through these ordinances or change them so that these people feel valued.
Commissioner Haig.
So I haven't had the chance to actually watch this particular, so I'm not informed on that, but I have heard from a couple of them of frustrations over not days or weeks, but months. So I get that. A lot's been said, so I'm not going to reiterate it. This is the second board that this has happened with, this happened with the APC. So, I agree with, we do need to have a joint meeting. I think it would add value. I did read through the ordinance, it's not in the forefront of my mind, but I read through it. It's fairly simple, it's not a lot of language in there, it's what, three paragraphs, four paragraphs maximum, something like, if I remember rightly, for the two that you referenced there, I think it's, it's not a large amount of detail.
It is the duty and purpose that they're struggling with that is, there has been some direction from commission, prior commissions as to what they want the duties and purpose section to be and how they actually should be interpreting that and working through it and not, and that's what I think the commission needs to take a look at first, and the commission needs to decide first what this ordinance should say and not say.
Right.
And then work with the board for them to understand what the commission is driving and needing from this advisory board.
Right. I agree. I think that the motion, though, is important to pass this evening because I am hesitant to have another meeting occur before the commission decides whether we think any changes to the ordinance are necessary or whether, because you've already explained how you believe to them what the ordinance says, and they disagree. But I am concerned about what we call, I'm concerned about the messaging to residents, I'm concerned about the credibility of our governmental processes, because there were several statements that were made in that meeting that basically talked about how the commission made decisions in very less than flattering terms and that our decision on Wimbledon was inappropriate and wrong. And so I think that we just, we need to pass this motion to have a moratorium, have a, just have a agenda item about what the, whether the ordinance is still appropriate and relevant for what the commission wants from that board or whether adjustments need to be made, and then have a workshop with them to explain.
Is it?
That they are an advisory board.
Okay. Can I second that as a motion?
I believe, Ms. Kucherik, you had the motion, so.
Can I make one comment?
Yes.
Really quickly, I agree with everything you said. For a board that is floundering and for a board that's not feeling like they're heard, I want to make clear that a moratorium on them is not something that they may feel enduring to in addition to all of their frustrations. The moratorium is not to stop them or silence them or what have you, it is to take a pause, everybody take a breath, and let's get a meeting together. So I will be in favor of this as long as we can get a meeting scheduled quickly.
That's actually what I was.
So that they understand that we value them, that we hear them, and we're not pushing this off to October or November. This needs to be taken care of quickly with them, and I think that sometimes some of the things that were said during the meeting are said in frustration and maybe aren't really meant by them, but to suggest that, you know, the city isn't functioning properly or this, the other is out of frustration more than out of accurate statements. So I agree with everything with the understanding that we can get something done, and if it's on a Saturday in September, so be it. But with that, I would support it with that, with that comment.
All right. So we have a motion to place a moratorium on future multimodal board meetings in order for the city commission to review and scrutinize Birmingham City Code sections 110-30 and 110-31 in order to examine and clarify the scope of authority, purpose, and duties of the multimodal board and to place this topic on a future agenda as determined by the city manager.
Second.
All right. We have a motion, second commission discussion on the motion.
Is it too soon to try to do this September 4 when they thought that they could meet? Or?
We're going to have a separate, we're going to have it as a commission agenda item first, so we can make our decisions before we have the meeting with them.
Okay.
At this time, I don't know how many people will be here for the September 8 meeting in terms of the commission, but we do have a fairly light agenda that night.
Okay.
Does count for September 8?
I'll be here.
I have no travel plans right now.
I'm here.
So you have at least four?
Okay.
Okay, for September 8. All right.
Because, yeah, I was going to ask for expediency to be part of that.
Yes.
Just requirement.
Definitely.
But it's not, is there a different word to moratorium, because it just feels so punitive?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not a, I'm not a thesaurus, I don't know.
The moratorium only means a pause. It just means that it's a temporary stopping of the enforcement of a certain ordinance. It just means that it's a temporary stopping of the enforcement of a certain ordinance in order to scrutinize that ordinance and determine the best course of action going forward. It's a pause. That's all it is.
Okay.
Everyone needs clarity. And the only way you're going to get to clarity is to just stop the playing field, step back, examine, look at it, implement.
Commissioner Host.
I really like what's happened here tonight because that meeting was, let's just say, contentious and an enigma to, you know, I hope you tell the multimodal board that we had this discussion and we want to help.
All right. So any further commission discussion on the motion? All right. Public comment on the motion in the room or online using the raise your hand function? I see Ms. Barrett. Kristi Barrett.
Oh, hello.
Yes.
I didn't realize I hadn't raised my hand. I'm sorry. I was actually earlier going to say, Commissioner Host, we met in the lobby and you had your glasses on, but now I see you have them. So, sorry, I didn't realize my hand was raised.
All right. Thank you. All right. So we have, does this need a roll call vote, Ms. Kucherik, or just a?
I would do a roll call, sure.
All right. Ms. Bingham, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Anthony Long.
Yes.
Mayor Therese Long.
Yes.
Commissioner Haig.
Yes.
Commissioner Host.
Yes.
All right. That concludes New Business. We move to remove from the consent agenda. We have none. Communications, we have a letter on 400 East Lincoln. We have a letter on 479 South Old Woodward. We have a letter on Trees, which the commissioners have all reviewed and are available as part of this public packet. We move to reports. Do we have any commissioner reports? Commissioner Comments? I know Commissioner Haig, you wanted to talk about the Dream Cruise.
I do. And we do have a nice write-up in 11E1 as well. But I want to commend everybody. I know I sent an email to the city manager, and I commend everybody for job well done. It was very impressive. So I was lucky enough to maybe peek behind the curtain a little bit. And I don't think everybody understands just how much goes into the back office work, shall we say, and the staging and the equipment and the needs and the support and the extra effort and the time. And that goes for everybody. I mean, I was lucky enough to spend some time with Erica in the shopping district tent where she provided me nice ice cold water on a hot day, which is greatly appreciated. It was extremely well executed. Everybody did a great job. Things that I did see from it that I will bring up now just as observations, and we've actually had answers on some of them for the public's benefit. I know, I was chatting with some of the police officers, and I saw the fire department riding around on bikes. And I was not in the slightest bit jealous of the police department wearing 20-pound body warmers with their vests on in that heat. It was nasty-looking. Chief Gruyeh did confirm, we have a couple of e-bikes, we've got a couple more on order. Honestly, I look at it with, even with the fire department, they had fire extinguishers on the back of their bikes. I think I saw a total of eight, I think. Make a budget amendment as soon as possible. Just get all of them because I am not jealous, not in the slightest. Those guys were brutally hot and doing a great service and kept smiling. So please, it's a rounding error, really, in the grand scheme of things to get, however many more, like four or six more bikes. Please put them on that. The other one, so I was riding around in one of the golf carts with the fire marshal at one point. And I think we could have walked faster. It was a tired golf cart, it was very tired. Someone made a comment about Austin Powers-esque at some point. And then I, we saw the DPS team running around in their gator clearing up, and they did a great, I mean, they were on everything. Those guys were up and down. It was great. But we were looking at the gator, and the fire marshal just looked and went, you know, I could probably actually fit a stretcher on the back of that if I had to. If they need one, can we put one of those in for them for events like this or emergency management? Because that can get into little spaces versus trying to bring a full ambulance or anything else in. And like I said, the golf cart, yeah, we'd have been quicker carrying someone out. Honestly, it was, it was nice not to walk, but it was hilarious how slow it was. So I would be quite happy with a budget amendment to look at that to support emergency services as a whole. Because I know that the razor that the police department uses is phenomenal. That thing's great for catching up with parking evasion and what have you. So those are really my observations. I was very impressed, very happy, very proud of everybody. We turned out terrifically. We did a great show. Everyone fantastic. And lots of smiles, happy faces, despite all of us sweltering and some more than others.
It was a wonderful event. And lots of city vehicles were on display blocking the roads and lots of city staff. And it was clean and pleasant and family-friendly and well-run. So any other commissioner comments?
Yeah, really briefly, I wanted to mention that Samir Eid, the owner of Phoenisha Restaurant, passed away on August 15. I was a good friend of his. And he immigrated to the United States in 1961. And in Hamtramck, he bought a restaurant for $5,700. He walked in, ate there, and walked out as the owner. And he changed the name to Phoenisha. And in 1971, he moved it to Birmingham, Michigan, where it has remained for 40 years. I went to his funeral. There was 800 people there. I have never been to a funeral with 800 people there. And it was everybody from every walk of life. And he's probably the longest restaurant owner in the city of Birmingham. And his son, Sammy, is going to continue with the restaurants. But I just did not want a meeting to go by without mentioning that. And maybe consider having the city do some type of commemoration, whether it's August 15. Happened to be Dream Cruise Day and my birthday, that he passed away unexpectedly. But maybe we can do something or consider something to honor him in the future, whether it's Sammy Eid Day on August 15 or something to that effect.
Right. Any commissioner host?
All right. I want to piggyback on that. You know, like Sammy, we have Pat Andrews. And this Sunday at 11 o'clock over at Fairfax and Maple, we have the unveiling of the outdoor children's reading library. And I hope you'll be there, and I hope you'll encourage neighbors to be there. Pat was an amazing teacher, and she was a legitimate Birmingham historian. And she was such a good neighbor to generations of Birmingham people. My hope would be that, just to honor her, that you would be there to see something that she would be very proud of 11:00 AM.
Thank you. All right. Advisory boards, committees, commission reports and agendas, legislation, city staff. We had the Woodward Dream Cruise 2025 report in our packet. And with that, I believe our business is concluded, so could we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.